Welcome to tonight's study session for the city of Casa Grande. Tonight, we have Arizona Water Company and Penal Water Augmentation Authority to give a presentation on water. On water policy.
You can't tell me why my grass is not growing?
And Mr. Mayor, members of the council, if I can just briefly give a bit of a context to the presentation tonight. And I know that the topic of water is one that's being discussed on a variety of levels. There's complexity to each aspect of water. And so my thought was to get some of our water professionals here. And as the mayor's pointed out, we have representatives from Arizona Water and the Penal County Water Augmentation Authority. I'll let them introduce themselves. I think we know most of them, maybe probably all of them. But tonight, what I'm envisioning is a 30,000 elevation foot presentation to bring all the council up to date on three specific elements. One is the drought contingency plan. The other is the Penal AMA and some of the things that are transpiring within that organization and within that boundary. And then lastly, is the water resources plan that the mayor and council funded and encouraged us as a staff to begin to look at that begins to drive a better analysis of the demand versus the supply. And that will also serve as a very key component to our update of our general plan, which we're underway with as well. And so it looked like Fred was going to start the, is that correct? Who started? Okay, so Fred Schneider is gonna, the new president of Arizona Water Company is going to start the presentation and I'll let them take it from here.
Thank you, Larry. Make sure everybody can hear me, okay? So my name's Fred Schneider. I'm the president of Arizona Water Company. I took over June 1 from Bill Garfield, who I'm sure many of you all know. But some introductions. We have Joe Singleton, who's the executive director for Penal County Water Augmentation Authority. Bill Garfield, who is our past president and is now our senior advisor and a director for Arizona Water Company. We have Terry Sue Rossi, who is our water resources manager. And then we have Mark Kirin, who's our chairman manager of the Penal Valley System. I want to thank you very much for having us here this evening. I really appreciate it. Want to remind everybody, this is a joint presentation between Arizona Water Company and the Penal County Water Augmentation Authority. So Joe recently had some back surgery, so I'll do the presentation of the first few pieces and then I'll turn over to Terry Sue on the water resources part. So three areas that we wanted to focus on this evening. I will present on the drought contingency plan and the assured water supply plan. And then Terry Sue will report on the joint water resources plan that we're doing with the city. I could spend a significant amount of time talking about all of these items. They're very complex, lot of details to them. However, as Larry mentioned, this would be kind of a high-level overview of the topics in a lot of the amount of time we have. And feel free to ask any questions as we go through. First area I'd like to focus on is the drought contingency plan. A few questions that we're gonna answer here is, what is it? Why are we doing this? And how does it benefit us? So while it's very complex and includes multiple parties, the DCP at its root is a multi-state agreement between the seven Colorado River Basin states to manage the water supplies on the river and includes another agreement within Arizona of how we will manage the water supplies and basically a voluntary agreement to reduce deliveries and diversions off of the Colorado River to try to avoid a drought, the idea, or declaration of a drought. The idea is to try to keep as much water in Lake Mead as we can to avoid the declaration of a drought. And there are various stages of the declaration. In essence, what you see on the graph, at the very top would be what the CAP generally diverts off of the river, a little over 1.4 million acre feet a year. And then the first dashed line is what the voluntary reduction is of about 192,000 acre feet. So that's a voluntary reduction and the idea is to keep that water in Lake Mead and try to avoid a drought. Essentially, what you see in that first dashed line is what I kind of refer to, at least at the time being, as a new norm. That's where the deliveries for Arizona will be. So next question is, why are we doing this? So based, to reduce the risk of shortage on the Colorado River, so basically if you look back the last 30 years, the Colorado River has been basically proven itself to be over-allocated. In essence, there's more water being diverted off of the river, about 1.2 million acre feet a year, over and above what the inflows are. So in essence, we're overdrafting or mining the water off the river more than what it can produce. Since November of 2012, Lake Mead has dropped over 51 feet and is currently at about 1083. That's about eight feet above the drought, the tier-one shortage level of 1075. So we've done quite a bit of work across the state trying to keep water in the river, in Lake Mead. We have been, but eight feet's not a whole lot of leeway. The Bureau of Reclamation manages the river operations, the two lakes and two dams. They have a series of models they use to determine the inflow from snowfall and runoff in the Colorado Rockies, as well as what the diversions will be and the allowances out of each one of those lakes are operated together. Depending on the levels in Lake Powell, that determines basically how much water's released from Lake Powell into Lake Mead. So they, basically the Bureau of Rec manages those two lakes as one system. As we have lower runoff, lower flows, we have a higher probability of a drought being declared. And of course, based on our junior rights of water off the Colorado River for Arizona, if there is a shortage declared, Arizona's the most vulnerable and takes some of the largest reductions in deliveries. So it's very advantageous for us, as well as other states, but primarily Arizona, to try to keep water in Lake Mead and avoid the declaration of a drought. And when Arizona receives reduced deliveries, the CAP water system, the canal system, is the one that takes the largest reduction versus some of the on-river allocations. So DCP, how does it benefit us? So in Penal, there's approximately a half a million acre feet of water that's allocated to the Penal area. About 325,000 acre feet are in long-term entitlements. About 120,000 acre feet are low-priority deliveries. And in Casa Grande, Arizona Water Company holds an entitlement for approximately 8,884 acre feet each year. So our goal is, we want to work with everybody and try to keep our deliveries as secure as we can by avoiding a drought. We have more certainty that we'll have our full deliveries. Also, if you can avoid the reduced deliveries, a lot of the costs of running the CAP canal are spread across, the fixed costs are spread across all the people who are getting water delivered. So as you deliver less water, everybody's costs are going to be going up. So it's advantageous for everybody to avoid a drought. Through the DCP process, we realized quite a few benefits. We realized a limited repeal of something called water bud. Basically stands for water that cannot be reasonably used directly. That's important because if you're using excess groundwater, pumping excess groundwater, water bud basically keeps you from being able to accrue and accumulate long-term storage credits that can be used in the future. Through the DCP process, we were able to get this rule waived for if the declaration of drought occurs. We got the rule waived for 2020, 2021, and 2022. Another benefit of DCP, if a drought is declared, is that the cities and towns in the Tucson and Tucson area have committed to take some of the water that they would have stored in their USFs within their own cities, and they have agreed to divert that water to the Penal area and provide that water to the farmers in the ag districts down here. And in exchange for the water they would be delivering down here, those cities and towns would receive long-term storage credits in the areas where they're at. So it's basically an exchange to try to keep the irrigation districts as whole as they can.
Excuse me, would that be other than the Indian farming within Penal County? Or in addition, would the Indian farming be included in Penal County?
This is just a diversion to, for the, basically the three districts that are down here.
The districts, thank you.
Yeah, primarily. So what is happening now? So that's what DCP was for. We didn't know what the hydrology was going to look like. But as everyone knows, in January of 2019, the hydrology on the Colorado Plateau and the Colorado area started looking very favorable, more signs of, positive signs. By June, what they measure, the potential runoff as snowwater equivalent, it was showing increases of 331% above the median, the seasonal median. In June, the Bureau of Reclamation reported inflows into Lake Powell of about 144% of the average, and that was from April through the end of July. And they projected the inflows into Lake Powell to be about 13.5 million acre feet, which is about 125% of the average. As a result of this, the probabilities of a shortage have dropped dramatically, as you can see in the chart. So what the red line is, is what the prediction was before we had the great wintertime and all the snow. And what you see in the green line is what's being predicted now. So you'll see in 2020, basically that the prediction of a drought being declared is zero, increases slightly in 2021, and then about 6%, and then increases the next few years thereafter. Important thing to point out that the prediction of a drought in those numbers are about 20 to 30%. That means that there's a 60 to 70% chance that there won't be a drought declared and those flows could be equal to the average or even better. So put that in more perspective, more likelihood that we're going to see at least average or better-than-average flows, not less than. Many of the benefits of DCP are only realized in the event of an actual declaration of a shortage. However, some of the benefits of DCP are not, specifically in Penal. There's a groundwater infrastructure program, and this project is estimated to bring in about $55 million for the development of new wells, approximately 60 wells, for the three irrigation districts, Maricopa Stanfield Irrigation District, Central Arizona, and Ho-Hokum. This will add about 60 wells or bring in 70,000 acre feet of new groundwater pumping capacity to help offset the reduction of CAP water for those irrigation districts. These wells are also, yes?
I just wanted to point out on the, those funding for pumping is going to irrigation districts and not to, is that?
Correct.
That's the case.
That is correct.
This would be a number of people each time a pump is put in place that would be able to pump off of it.
And there's a variety of funding coming in from the state of Arizona. There's funds from CAP. And there's also working on the RCPP grant program to bring in federal funds to help fund the $55 million. Yep, that's correct. So we're also involved in the grant process. We're actually working with irrigation districts to help work out an arrangement whereby we can also participate in the funding of these much-needed wells and groundwater supplies that would benefit them, also allow us to recoup CAP water and maybe future supplies going forward. So it's a very complex, multi-party agreement. The state, several agencies, irrigation districts are all involved in putting together this grant application. Future benefits. Another benefit of DCP is that the managed recharge facilities that are already, that were already in the process of being permitted, there are six of them, including the city of Casa Grande's Managed Effluent Recharge Project, are now able to accrue 95% credit for the water that is stored in those facilities versus where it was being 50%. There was also provision in the statute that curtails the accrual of those credits in 2025. This provision was also rescinded when they changed the storage credits from 50 to 95%. Both of those are huge impacts and benefits to the community of Casa Grande. And both of those are long-lasting changes that'll be here for decades to come. A couple takeaways for DCP. Basically, in summary, DCP was successful in what we call bending the curve or trying to reduce the likelihood of a drought. We basically were able to reduce the likelihood of drought for 2019 and 2020 with no shortages most likely being declared. The change in the hydrology of the basin with this winter has also been very favorable, as we showed by that graph, of reducing a drought for the next four or five years, definitely the next two or three years. However, DCP is not a solution to the assured water supply plan and issues that we're facing here in Penal. So on DCP, there's a lot more that could be said about DCP. You could get down in much more of the details. And if there is, I guess, a desire to dig in the details more, we'd be happy to work with the city in arranging maybe Department of Water Resources to come in, and they could provide a lot of detail and information on DCP. Next area of focus is assured water supply.
Excuse me?
Yes.
Just before we go on to that, so it's important, that last slide to everybody, is that this is not a solution by any means. It's just a temporary thing that we're doing. Back to that $55 million, is there a lot of loan money in there or is it all grant money? Because I think that some of it was loaned at this time.
So I'm not sure if Terry Sue, you're best to answer that.
Yeah.
Or Bill?
And if we're getting to that later, that's fine.
Yes, good evening, Bill Garfield, mayor, council members. There's $20 million right now earmarked from the state as a loan. And the purpose for that was to sort of get a jumpstart on funding of the infrastructure because, you know, the irrigation districts need to get moving on that fairly soon in advance of securing grant money from the federal government. So that, right now, would have to be paid back from grant monies or other contributions from some of the participating entities.
Okay, so, and then another question that someone asked me, a resident in the county area. So once they start pumping these new wells, and there's a lot of residential wells out there that aren't nearly that deep, do you anticipate any problems with the residential-type wells or do we?
That's a wide-reaching question. One thing I will say, though, is-
What is it, Brett? It depends.
For new wells, for example, there are well-impact analyses that have to be conducted for any new well, whether we drill a new well, irrigation district, or an individual farmer. So if they go out and drill a well, they have to model the effects of pumping that well on any wells that are within a distance from that well that could cause a drawdown of, say, up to 10 feet or if it draws down more than 10 feet in five years, for them to get that permit, they would have to have a waiver from any well owner who might be impacted from that new well. So there are some protections in place. Is it something that's going to protect them for, you know, 50 years to come? I mean, that's well beyond what might predict with a five-year sort of analysis of that.
Okay, good. So at some point in time with CAP, so they abandon the wells, turn those over. So if that particular landowner is going to take that well that they gave away 30 years ago, and that, is that the same thing as far as registering that and all?
Okay, so, and this is probably an irrigation district question, but-
You know what, yeah, I apologize.
When they stepped into the role as a district, whatever individual wells were there were effectively turned over to the district to use for the purpose of providing water to lands within the districts. What happens down the road, I don't know. I can't answer that. It's not something I generally deal with today.
Understood.
But in order to get a permit, you have to do these analyses. And I will say that one of the things Mr. Schneider was referring to when we talked about working with the districts, we are also looking for these wells to serve a dual purpose where we would recover our cap water, where we store water and recover. It just expands our redundancy and capacity for us to do that. And at some point in time, they could also convert to service area wells for serving the community of Casa Grande.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So there's assured water supply. So what we're going to discuss here are, what are the basics? Why talk about it now? And what are our next steps? I like to why talk about it now. Basics are, to build, to subdivide, and sell land, you basically have to be able to show that you have an assured water supply. To do that, it sounds fairly simple. The water you have needs to be, meet certain criteria. Needs to be physically, continuously, and legally available for the project. The water quality standards need to be able to be met. The water needs to be able to be treated or provided to meet drinking water standards. The developer and the utility have to show the financial capability of developing that necessary infrastructure for the project, being water mains, water supply wells, and such. And the water use on the project must be consistent with the water management goals of ADWR and meet all the conservation requirements. Sounds simple, but the real first item is the most important, is that it's physically, continuously, and legally available. So, yes, Mr. Powell?
Just a question, the, do the Salt River Project and Arizona Water give you these guarantees or do they have to get it through the other process? Developer, if he's going to put in 20 homes or however many he wants to do in an area that you serve, do you say there's enough water for 100 years or does he have to go and buy credits or otherwise?
The Department of Water Resources is the one who makes that determination. So basically, in 2010, we had done what was called the physical availability demonstration, where we studied the area and proved up a certain amount of supplies for new development. However, since that time, there hasn't been a lot of development in the area. However, that water was then tied up with what was called analyses. So basically, the water's been all tied up and earmarked for projects, even though those projects have not gone forward. But ADWR makes that determination.
I think, yeah, I think what he was asking is, who goes to get the permit? And the answer is the developer.
No, I wasn't wondering about that. I just wondered, I know you can go different places to get water, but I just wondered if the water companies that serves big service areas are the ones that will back up 100-year supply for the developer or if he has to do that otherwise.
So the next step would be, there's two different ways to prove up an assured water supply. You can have what's called a member lands area whereby each developer, each land goes in and gets their certificate and proves up its supplies, one as you go. Or you can do a member service area or a designation where you do a study and you determine a certain amount of water that will be available for a duration of time, and then that water can be then earmarked for each one of those projects as they come forward to have a plat recorded. So in Casa Grande area, basically everything we do is by certificate or a member land area. So each developer is required to go in and prove up their certificate based on the data that we had developed as part of our PAD, sort of like a checkbook that was created to show that there's water available. Unfortunately, through a PAD, the water's not really earmarked for a project, it's just available for the area. Then it's your question. So I mentioned developments in the Casa Grande area primarily rely on certificates of assured water supply. So one important thing to note is, we're pretty closely with the city and specifically the Mayor McFarland in developing a really cool, important map that shows us where we have properties that have certificates and where properties do not. And what we determined is that there's about 120 sudivisions. 102 of those are enrolled in the CAGRd, which is Central Arizona Groundwater Replenishment District, whereby the district is required to take on the replenishment obligations for a portion of the groundwater pumping that occurs in that project. And what we did determine is that there's about 25,000 lots that are available for development in the Casa Grande area alone. As I mentioned, there's an analysis part. So analysis kind of fits between a physical availability demonstration or a PAD and a certificate. So it's like a checkbook. So a project can apply and show that they have a supply of water. They don't have to have a plat and show specifically which lots it goes on, but it's like a checkbook. Then as they move forward the project, they can have certificates issued and in essence deduct out of that checkbook. What we looked at is that there's 41 analyses in the Penal area that comprises 126,000 lots. So those are projects that could, at some point, move into certificates and develop, but that is not part of the 25,000 lots that I mentioned earlier.
Bill, does the Arizona Department of Water's model take those 41 analyses out of the model? Does it take, if it's an analysis?
Yes, that's removed from the model.
Okay, thank you.
So a great lead into the model discussion. So the basin is modeled by the state Arizona Department of Water Resources. And from our meetings we've had with the director and the department, what we have learned is that there's, we believe, there's about an 8.5 million acre-foot deficit in the model, i.e. there's a shortage in the model. That equates to about 85,000 acre feet each year. To put that in perspective of how much water we pump, in the Penal area, we pump about 18,000 acre feet a year, and the current deficit is about 85,000 acre feet. So it's a very large substantial deficit is what the model looks at right now. So in essence, because of the deficit, for all practical purposes, the department, ADWR, has stopped issuing certificates or any new analyses or even any renewals of designations in the Penal AMA.
So there's 126,000 lots that are being analyzed or?
In analysis, so we have a certi-
But the, basically, AWS's certificates are not being issued in Penal County?
What we're learning is no new certificates are being issued in Penal AMA. So what are our next steps? As I mentioned, one of our big focuses on, is working on those lands that have certificates where we can get developers to move forward fairly quickly. We're looking to develop a path forward where those analyses that we mentioned, the 41 analyses, 126,000 lots, need to find a way to get those analyses moving forward into certificates so we can try to get the department to issue some certificates off those. As we'll discuss shortly, as we're working with the city on developing a joint water resources master plan. Part of this plan is to look and quantify how much water we need to get development to move forward and what those acquisition needs are. And a big part of that is to create a financial mechanism to acquire those supplies, acquiring renewable supplies or long-term storage credits, whatever there may be. It's not an inexpensive path forward, but definitely probably the solution we have to put in place at some point as these 25,000 lots are developed and 126,000 lots tied to analyses begin to move forward. So with that, I'd like to turn over to Terry Sue Rossi to talk about the water resources plan we're working on.
I have a quick question.
Yes.
On those certificates, so those developments, they carry that certificate forever? So there's no way?
At this point, they're-
At this point, I know that's the big question.
They're tied to land. They can be transferred from, you know, one person to another. There are some criteria by which those certificates would be to be transferred or would have to get in the back of line for renewal if you make material changes to the plat. And the department defines those, and there's a long list of things they define that. So as long as you're not making a material change, generally the department will reissue that certificate in another person's name to allow the project to move forward.
Oh, yeah.
So generally, as long as you don't change the membership boundary or lot lines, things like that, those are usually considered material changes if you're to change those. Any other questions? Okay?
Thank you, Fred.
Terry Sue?
Well, thank you very much for having us here today. I'm really excited about being able to present the joint water resource plan concept to all of you. And I have to say, there's probably never been a better time to do something like this from a technology perspective. The information that we have available to us, and the types of tools we have available to us, are going to allow us to create an amazing product for you. And that's what we're going to talk about today. In the, in the past, and I've been doing this for a long time, even though, even though I only look like I'm 39, I've been doing this a long time. And Water Resource Plans in the past have really just been a document that you would put on a shelf. And I brought one with me today. This is Tucson Water did a plan back in 2004. This was their Water Plan 2000 to 2050. And at the time, I would say this was the plan. Like, everybody was jealous when this plan came out. And they did, they're the first ones who did scenario planning. And they went out 50 years, and we were like, wow, it was like fireworks, you know? And we thought this was really great, and they came up with these recommendations, because that's what all good Water Resource Plans do. They come up with five or six recommendations, and then you do those, and then five to 10 later, 10 years later, you do the plan again. And, and if it's five years later, that means you've got a lot of growth and things are happening. And then, in the Tucson Plan, they came up with these, these things. Emphasize physical water management strategies. That's code for use the water directly. Utilize renewable groundwater. Reassess water quality targets. Fully utilize Colorado River water. This is Tucson Water, mind you. Fully utilize effluent. Utilize effluent as a wet water resource. That's code for use it directly. Acquire additional water supplies. Manage water demand. Implement a Water Resource Impact Fee, and expand regional cooperation. So, they did that plan in 2004, November of 2004. They repeated it again. They did an update in 2009. And they came up with those same recommendations in that plan. And then, what happened, actually, it was the 2008 Plan. And we all know what happened after 2008, right? And so, I think they kind of were a little afraid, so they didn't do another one until 2012. And if I read to you the recommendations here, they would sound just like the recommendations I read to you earlier. So, that's what we used to do. And suffice it to say, that the old ways just don't work anymore. So, we're presenting a different concept of how to do Water Resource Planning. And I'm going to just use my really, really well-developed graphics here to kind of explain things. But, in the Tucson Plan, what they did was they had this thing called the Cone of Uncertainty. This is the cone of uncertainty. And for those of you who are familiar with scenario planning, you know what the cone of uncertainty is. I call it the voodoozilla of uncertainty. And so, on this is what they see as today, on this end of the cone is today, where we are at. And in the future, there are all these options, all this stuff that can happen to you. And so, you develop all these scenarios, and, and then that way, one of them maybe is right, and you can shoot towards that, and you keep your options open as long as possible, so that you have what they call a no-regrets analysis. So, that's no regrets for the planning department. So, but at some point, you have to make real decisions. And a no-regrets strategy doesn't work at some point. So, I would suggest that really, they're looking at the cone the wrong direction. And here is where we are at. We have lots of things that we could do today, and we have to figure out where we're going to go. And this is what I call the grow a pair strategy. So, this is what we need to do in order to make decisions. So, you're going to do a little bit of this, but eventually, you've got to decide where you're going to go. Our focus is more on deciding where you're going to go. So, that kind of is the bigger-picture overview of what we're going to try to accomplish. And in our Water Resource Plan, there are some big chunks that I want to talk about. There are kind of six of them, and if only I could see the slide, that would be, oh, wait, wait, I have, I think I've got the, maybe I don't, I don't have the slide projection. So, the, the big chunks are project administration, which I'll talk about very briefly. So, we're, this is a joint Water Resources Plan, so we have developed a project team that involves the city, and that involves us. And on your, your side of the equation is Larry, Kevin Lewis, Paul Teis, Stephanie Adams, Catherine Hudson. And on our side is Bill Garfield, and Fred Schneider, and me. And then, as we bring in more, as we need more expertise, we'll bring in other people with, in both of our organizations, but that's the core project planning team. We've met already, and we'll meet regularly as time goes on. Then, there are five other areas, big chunks, if you will. One is what I would call basic data collection, which we're in the process of doing right now. Another is defining the study area. Another is what we call the four inventories, which are sort of organized targeted data collection pieces. And then, all of that information coalesces into what we're calling the planning tools, which is the analytical work we will do to determine where the water supply and the water demand line cross. And everything above here is what we're missing. And that's kind of the point of all of that work. So, we're going to do a ton of work. It'll eventually give us one number that says, this is how much we're short. And we could do a lot of scenario planning that could tell us that it's going to be 20% more than that, or 20% less than that. But eventually, we have to decide how much money we're going to spend. So, yes.
So, the thing I'm not seeing, and I apologize. I'm not seeing anything on usage versus, I'm just seeing that we've got, you know, a, an estimated amount of supply, and that, and I just haven't heard anything on, what do we do to conserve? And, and I'm not seeing that in any plan that I've seen tonight.
So, water conservation, water management, is absolutely a part of the picture. The reason that you're not seeing it directly is that we characterize it in terms of a supply. So, when we come up with the different components of the supply program, one of them will be demand management. So, it's absolutely a part of the mix.
So, when you say demand management, demand in the idea that it means a user, and that as far as, what is my responsibility on conservation to meet, so as part of my demand? I have my demand, I know what I get from my bill, and I, I just not seeing conservation. I just don't hear conservation in any of this.
So, when, when we refer to demand management, that's kind of like a fancy way of saying water conservation. So, eventually, at the end of all of this, there will be a recommendation. One of the recommendations will end up being, we need to have a robust demand management program. And within the context of that, then we develop all different types of methods of doing water conservation, indoor, outdoor. We'll have an educational program. We may have discussions about rate structures and how those impact water use. But that's where all of that comes out in the wash. It's one of many, and, and the water management people have a tendency to look at more as a supply instead of as the endpoint. It's one of the ways, you can either reduce your demand or increase your supply, sort of like retirement. I can either cut my budget, or I can go out and save more money. So-
Maybe you can do both.
And we can do both, and we can absolutely do both, and every responsible, every responsible utility does both. Now, the difference between what, say, if we were the city of Tucson, is that we would be, we would be doing, as the city, we would be serving the water, and we would do the, the demand management program. So, when we do, when we do a demand management program, we're talking to your citizens directly. So, we'll want to make sure that that conservation program is agreed to, all the messaging, all the things that we do are agreed to by the city. And we may even decide that the city is the better face for the water conservation program. But those are details that, when we get to that point, we'll come back with, here's the water conservation proposal.
I'd like to see that front and center.
Okay. All right, so let's see, where are we? Oh, so, so the, the new approach. We talked about the idea that the old approach isn't working anymore. The old waves don't work. So, the new way is that a Water Resource Plan is a decision-making tool for the city, and it's to help guide your future. It's a roadmap, for us, it's a roadmap for Arizona Water Company. A roadmap for figuring out what we need to do, where we need to build the pipes, where we need to put the storage. Our job is to make your future become real from a Water Resources perspective, and from a Water Operation perspective. We're not looking for a single answer at the end of this, at the end of this whole thing. If, if you are expecting to hear one answer, you will be disappointed. There's going to be many answers that will come out of this, and we'll be doing a combination of things, just like what you described. It's not a this or a that. It's going to be this, and this, and this, and this, and this. This Water Resource Plan isn't going to be a single document that sits on the Public Works Director's shelf. This is going to be a real-time, interactive, geospatial environment, and it's going to be accessible to you via the internet. And so, if Larry decides that he wants to give a presentation at every single council meeting describing Water Resources in the city, he will have the ability to do that through a series of queries that would be run right from his desk, and he can give a presentation or an update on them. Or if you want us to come in and do that, at whatever frequency, we're going to design the tool so that we can always tell you, this is where you're at. And so, that's the difference between what Tucson Water did, and what we're proposing to do now. So, the next big chunk, I believe, is the data collection. So, we are in the process of collecting data right now, tons of data. County parcel data, data from the Department of Water Resources, that's related to assured water supply certificates, that's related to demands, that's related to well data, any data they have. We're collecting data from the Central Arizona Project, from the, the Central Arizona Groundwater Replenishment District that Fred mentioned earlier. And then, we're extracting all of our own data, and we're putting it into a geospatial environment. We're also collecting socioeconomic data and geographic data from other organizations like State Land Department, and like the Association of Governments. So, basically, anything that has to do with land use or water use, we're bringing into this environment. And then, we're going to use that data to create these other tools. And we expect, we expect to have all of the data collection done by the end of the year. But I want to make sure that, that everybody understands that that's not the end of the data collection. That's just the establishing of the baseline data, and from that point forward, we'll be collecting data on a regular basis. New information, new preliminary plats, anything that happens and changes, that will all be brought in. So, the next big chunk is the study area, or the water planning area. And we sat down with, at our first project team meeting, we, as a group, the, the city and Arizona Water Company, put together the actual water planning area for the study. And that's what you see here. And then, I also brought some 11-by-17 copies, so that you can take this with you today if you would like. And I don't know if you wanted to strip it, these now, or wait, but, do you want me to give them to you? So, that's kind of our world as we go through and do this study. Now, that isn't to say that the water planning area can't change. You know, today, we can change boundaries as quickly as you can change a word in a document. But this is the one that we're going to start with. So, let's see here. Now, the next big chunk is what we're calling the four inventories. And what, what the four inventories are, is there's one for Water Resources Infrastructure, there's one for the existing water supplies, there's one for potential water supplies, and there's one for financial mechanisms. And what these are, are really targeted research data collection projects. And these become legs in the stool, if you will, for the planning tools that we're going to create. So, the Water Resource Infrastructure one is basically any, any physical piece of infrastructure that could help us with our Water Resource Solutions, whether it's wells, whether it's canal systems, whether it's storage tanks, anything actually physical that's within our service area, and also, that is within the service areas of others around us or near us. The existing water supplies would be an inventory, all, all the water supplies that are managed by Arizona Water Company, and under our control, and also the city. So, for example, you all have effluent water resources. So, that's one of the supplies that would be inventoried in that existing water supply inventory. Potential water supplies are other water supplies outside of our control that we don't already have, and that could potentially be used to be brought inside the city. So, these, this could be everything from leases with other Central Arizona Project water users, like, say, the Grick or something like that. It could be something on river. It could be a water ranch. It could be effluent from, that's produced by others. So, these are the kinds of options that we're talking about. Could be some potential groundwater resources in other locations, but it's not under our control at the moment. The last one is the financial mechanisms, and that is a listing of the different ways that we could finance these things. And just like there is no one answer for Water Resources, there's not one answer for financial mechanisms. So, there may be bonding, there may be water rates, there may be fees, Water Resource Fees. There may be, I mean, I can't remember them all off the top of my head, but there's probably, you know, 15 items that we're looking at to have more detail put together. And in fact, we've, yes?
Is the finance, when you're talking finance, is that for infrastructure, the building of infrastructure and water delivery? When you're talking about finance?
The financial mechanism would be for purchasing the water rights that we would need to bring in. And to the extent that there would be infrastructure needed to accompany that, to make that happen, it would include that.
It's a combination of other?
Yes. But it's not everything. It's not like all the stuff that we would do on a normal basis.
Right, I'm just seeing finance and what needs to be financed.
Yep. So, these then become the building blocks that we need to use in order to do the next big piece in the Water Resources Plan, which is the supply and demand planning tools. So, we're going to come up with, we're going to, we're going to quantify the city's future use plan with the water demands. So, we're going to figure out, based on your future use plans, what is the water demand that we would expect would be a part of that plan? And water conservation will actually come in, into play within the context of that. To what extent do we believe there will be demand management or water reductions over time? We could incorporate that concept into there. And, and then, the other thing we'll do is we'll look at, what, where are we at existing-wise? What's our existing land use? What are the demands associated with that? And then, we figure out the difference between those two. And then, we, we, we figure out how much water supply we have. And when the demand line for what goes out to the future, and the supply line cross, is when, that's when, that's when we are able to figure out how much water we're missing, what the, what the demand, the supply deficit is. So, if your supply line looks like this, and the demand line looks like that, then everything on this side is the deficit, right? And so, that's the whole purpose of the supply and demand planning model. And so, once we've figured out what that wedge is, then we can, we can develop an acquisition target. So, what I want to be real clear about is that the target is not going to be something like the future land use plan. There's going to be 300,000 housing units here, and we need to increase our water supply by 10 times. It's going, oh, let me just-
No, that's a security door.
She's either used to coming in.
We need to put a sign up. We need to do a sign.
So-
Sign up, to use other doors.
So, we're, we're not going to say, the future Water Resource Plan says we need, we're going to have 300,000 housing units in Panal, or in Casa Grande area, and so, we need three times more water than we have right now. It's going to say something like, the target needs to be about 120% of where we're at right now, because there are limitations. Money is a limitation. The, the number of units per year that we would be growing gives us some practical information about how we should define what that target is. And again, all of these things will be done together. So, when we know, this is that, this is what the wedge looks like, we're going to sit down as a project team, and we're going to decide, what will be the target volume? Is it going to be 5,000 acre-feet, or is it going to be 15,000 acre-feet? We'll do that together. Okay, and then, the last step is where, what we call the analysis step, or the first application step. Everything that I've described so far for you will be done by the end of the year. So, then, we're ready to apply the first application. And the first application will be a water supply acquisition plan. So, once we know that this is the target volume, then we set out to identify the potential sources, and we go out and start negotiating, and eventually, bring home what we need. And we, in the same time that we're doing that, once we've identified, this is the volume, and we go out and negotiating, then we start to put the financial mechanism together, because the financial mechanism is going to vary based on what supply sources we go out and get. It isn't, there isn't one set way that will work for a particular supply. So, we have to kind of know what's becoming real for us before we can really focus on the financial mechanism. We can know the costs, but then, how we apply the financial mechanisms is a second step in that. And then, the other thing we'll do after all this stuff is done, is we'll go through and figure out what you all need as far as queries. figure out what you all need as far as queries, questions that you want to ask the data, so that whenever you want to know, for example, how many certificates of assured water supply do we have? How many of them are built? How much water do those, those certificates use? What's the projected growth of the ones that aren't built yet? Whatever questions that you have, you know, what's our, what's our demand? What's our non-residential demand? What's our residential demand? And then the other thing we'll be able to do is pull in preliminary plat. So, before something even gets a certificate of assured water supply, you're the first people who know. You know, the preliminary plat comes in. We pull that into our system very early on, it's in a preliminary stage, but we already begin the planning for it. So, that'll be there as well. And so, we'll, we'll define all of the things that you want to know on a regular basis, that you can just go to your computer print, and it will tell you an answer.
I just want to say that you've been at, Arizona Water's been a good partnership with Casa Grande, and I really hope that's gone with it, and I appreciate, you know, as far as the questions, the answers that we have, and I look forward to the end of the year to see all of this. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. We're excited about it. Yes.
I just was going to comment on a couple of things. You were there when I talked about a plan to, to harvest floodwater. And the, that plan was accepted by the Natural Resource Conservation District in Arizona, and sent back to the headquarters, the recommendation. Last Wednesday night, it was adopted by the Farm Bureau here in town. I just talked today to, to somebody that has the oldest water rights on the Colorado River, the Colorado River Indians. And he's wanting to go with me, because they don't want to run out of water on the river. And, and, and when we talk about water in Casa Grande, that's one thing, but if we're not talking about agricultural needs around us, and all the, all the money that's involved and, and how that affects our economy, we could be in, in lots of trouble. So, anyway, we're, I've, I've got a deal in to the governor, we're going to try to meet with him, and he's, he's, he's talked to some of the Indian tribes, they like the idea of bringing in a new source of water. And, and while, especially while it's helping someone else that had $19 billion worth of damage done on the river. And, and if you can reduce that amount of damage by reduction, it would really be a win-win for everybody. And, and they also mentioned that Nebraska has, has basically gone through their aquifer, and the Oklaho Aquifer's down to rock. And they would probably be interested also if we do that, about refilling their aquifer with some of that excess water to get back into it. And the, as, as I say, it, it's a, it's a long-term thing, and, and we don't have enough water until we can, you know, get the fields and people can get a whole field instead of having to fallow 40%. We don't have enough water until we can do those kind of things. And the city might have it, but as I say, if we don't have it around us, we really stigmatize our economy. And I know a lot of them have said, you know, if we don't, if we, if that happens and, and the farmers leave, we leave, and that's, that really is important to us. But the, I wanted to just fill you in where that is right now.
Thank you.
And it seems to be gaining steam, and, and we've, I've talked to Cinemas Man and, and a bunch of different ones about it. And the next one I want to see is, is Martha. And hopefully, I'll see that next week or so, and, and keep getting people on board for this, because it can be done. And it, it, it's something that could really be a benefit if we had another source of water. Herb Gunther said way back when, when on one of these water conferences, he said, without a new source of water, replenishment will never work. And if we continue to pump water, we're going to have the Gobi Desert. And, and we need a new source of water, and we've found one that we're working on right now, trying to, to get that through the, the, I know, the drought contingency plan, in my mind, really didn't do very much except kick the can down the road. Now, for Penal County, because of guys like Steve Miller, that got rolled up his sleeves and helped get us pumps, and those kind of things here, that, that part of it's really helped. But the, as I say, the, I remember when they started, the first thing that Bureau Reclamation said is, there's nothing in this drought contingency plan that's going to keep us from running out of water. And, and that's where we're headed as a state right now, unless we get a new source of water. So, that's my comments. Thank you very much, and thanks for the telephone number.
Mayor?
We're getting some... You brought water, did you see that?
I don't think so, not to solve our problem, but to start. I also wanted to say, I had an opportunity to participate last, a couple of months ago, over the past part of the year, in the Flynn Brown Fellowship, and we had an exercise where we talked about this. And I coincidentally drew the role of Penal County farmer to defend, yeah, weird, right? So, we had, you know, we had discussions about it, and most from the metropolitan area of Phoenix. And I will just tell you, we really need to protect our water here in Penal County, because most of those people don't see the reason why we should get water down here for ag, and they, I mean, I'll say they don't care too much. And another thing about this, since Councilman Powell did it, is the DCP Committee, a friend of mine actually from Flynn Brown, Shane Leonard's out there, hi, he was actually on the state DCP Committee to write...
He brought his own expert.
Yeah, I did. But he was actually on the committee that did the DCP, so I, I told him that we were talking about it tonight, and he's just loves talking about water, so he came by to see what we were doing.
So, I'll also just do a little quick call out to Bill. Bill Garfield was also on the DCP as well. Excuse me.
Mayor? Bob? Just a question. Is this in some way legally required, or are we just being appropriately proactive?
On the water resource plan?
Yes.
That is, you're not legally required to do that.
Okay. Well, I certainly applaud that. And my, my other question, you, you went over the, the team members. I heard city representation and Arizona water representation. Does it go beyond that? And ultimately, my, my question is going to be, do we have everyone that we need at the table in this group?
So, the, 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 the project team, the way we view it, is more as a working team. There'll be times when we are going to want to go out and get feedback on certain things. So, more of a stakeholder-type thing, there'll be moments when we'll need to go out and tap a larger base. But the, the project team is more kind of directing the water resource effort and keeping the workflow going and that kind of thing.
Okay.
And, and if I can, Mr. Mayor, to answer Councilman Huddleston's, our, my thought at least, is that, because this is going to become an, an element of our general plan, the water resource plan is going to become an element of our general plan, that when we, as, as Ms. Rossi has pointed out, that, that the working team that she outlined is really the technical team, the individuals that have access to the data and are putting it together to be able to take out to other organizations and, and individuals, such as the Steering Forum, that the council's going to be appointing for our general plan at the next, at our next council meeting, to really get the input and, and, and guide some of, some of the direction of the plan, but more importantly, maybe even have some of the recommendations that Councilwoman Corson outlined with conservation and so on and so forth. I, I see there being some decisive decisions for the city to make once this plan is done regarding policy.
And, and do we have a projection of what kind of timeframe we're looking at? Of, and I'm just wondering, when will we see it again?
In terms of the water resource plan?
Yes.
So, we're, we intend to have all of the, the modeling and all that done by the end of the year, and then the first application will be the water resources acquisition strategy. We can give presentations anywhere along the way that you want us to, but I would certainly see one at the end of the year, so that we can show off what we put together, right?
Wonderful.
And, and again, give an idea of what that target acquisition volume would be, and to let you know, this is, we're moving into this next phase. But we can, we can do updates at whatever frequency you're comfortable with.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Does Arizona Water use CAP water at all, or is it strictly your, the, the pumping and the, the, that furnishes the water for a...
Do you mean directly? Because we, we use ver, we use all of our CAP water. So, we don't use all of it directly. Some of it is used directly, and I have to say...
So, you have additional CAP water?
Pardon?
You have additional CAP allocation?
Well, I... Fred, do you want to...
Mr. Powell? So, we have eight, for Casa Grande, we have 8,884 acre feet. Some of that water goes to the city's ball fields, soccer fields, some goes to Francisco Grande on the golf course, some goes to the, the power plant. The remaining amount, about 6,000 acre feet or so, is what we actually do annual storage and recovery to offset our groundwater pumping. But all of our, our water is, is fully used.
Depend on APS, that's, you guys have treated us really well, and, and the, the reason I'm kind of asking, if, if we get down to Deadpool in 2026, 2027, which isn't that far away, and you don't get any CAP water, what will you guys do?
As far as looking to acquire, somewhat we'll have to have additional supplies, just like, just like some of the stuff you've been talking about.
Bill, I knew I could get you up.
Retiring President privilege here.
Wait, we've got to do the P P promise?
There is an amount of water, CAP water, that's already been stored in the Penal Active Management Area for firming purposes, where there's a shortage and they can no longer deliver wet water off the Colorado River. So, there is an amount of water that's already stored down here on, on purpose, so that when we recover water, we'll be recovering water, not for that year's storage, but what's been stored for these years. So, that's what we would do in the event of...
So, you have it in storage? That's a good answer then.
Well, the Water Banking Authority is one entity that has stored water down here, and Terry Su actually worked for the Water Bank before, I mean, to work for Arizona Water Company. So, it was their purpose and charge, is one of the charges, to store water for firming in the event of shortage.
And that's what, that's what bothers the Colorado Rivers, I say, the oldest water right on the, on the river, the Colorado River Indian tribes, is the fact that if, if it gets Deadpool and they just have a, a stream going by anymore, and the lakes are empty, and, I mean, those are worst-case scenarios, but those are things we have to face and think about, because they, they're prognosticating down the road it could happen, so...
Yeah, and I, I think one of the slides that Fred showed earlier has given those of us in the water industry a lot of comfort, which is that this year's hydrology will mean that it is very unlikely that at least between now and the latest projections, 2024, that we would even go into shortage, let alone down to the Deadpool levels. And, and there are lots of triggers in place, of things that have to be done to avoid global... You know, I think in, in the water industry, it's like if, the equivalent of killing the child would be going to Deadpool. So, we are not going to let that happen. There'll be, I mean, water conservation will become not just a passing thing if we get to that point. There'll be restrictions and reductions unlike we've never probably seen before.
And the DCP takes us only basically six years down the road.
Right.
You're already, they're already talking about, what is that next effort going to be? Between the states and within Arizona itself, so...
That's one of the things that's bothered me, and it's, I just may not be in on it and not be aware of it, but it doesn't seem like there's a lot of planning going on behind the, the public's eyes, I guess, apparently, on what to do, and the clock's going by, and we get into another year and another year. This coming year was supposed to be the, the first year we'd go below 75, and we had a unusual winter, so that kicked it down the road a year, and, and with, with any luck, we can maybe keep doing that for a while, but we're eventually going to need more water.
And I know we have to...
It's also good to have a plan.
Yes.
And, you know, I know that it sounds like we have our own little dream team on this project, which is great, but I guess, just backing up what Bob said, you know, there's going to be some stakeholders that might need to be at the table. I'd rather not hear about that a year when it ends. I would like to kind of be kept up on that, who those folks are at the table, just for my, especially if we're talking community or farmers and things like that.
If I can add to that, this whole group, and myself included, are part of also a basin study, water basin study, that's going to go on for the next two and a half years. And so, all, every one of those players is part, so we pull on that resource, we pull on those people. So, just to assure you, they're not doing this in a vacuum. Okay? So, so understand, there's a lot more people behind the scenes and other organizations, including what Mr. Powell does, as well as what I do. So, we're, there's a lot of effort that's being put in, into this, okay? This is just an outcome for us. All right? I just, I hope I didn't put words in your mouth.
Yeah, you did, but that's okay. And, and also, and I appreciate that Larry brought up the general land use plan, because one of the things that we're actually most excited about is, is to work with the city on the water element for the general land use plan. So, all of the stakeholder involvement that you already have embedded within the general land use plan, that's where a lot of the vetting is going to go on. So, I think we've got some built-in stuff, but we can also do other things as well. It doesn't have to just be within the context of the general land use plan.
Very good.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
Just like to say thank you to all you guys for coming tonight.
Thanks very much.
Yep, thank you. Thank you.
Conservation, conservation.
Thank you, very good presentation.
And stakeholder involvement.
Okay, we'll stand adjourned, we'll reconvene at 7:15.